Ladies, we're so glad you're here. Thank you for being here. We are looking forward to your annual report on the FCPS pre-K and early Head Start. We apologize for being a few minutes late, but we were trying to get as many of us as possible around the table. So if you would like to, go ahead.
It's my pleasure to have Maura Burke, our Director of the Office of Early Childhood and Grant Management, and she has a parent with her that she'll introduce, and we look forward to hearing all the work this year.
Thank you, Dr. Ray Brand. Hi, yes, thank you for having us here today. This evening I have Rehab Albana, who's one of our parents. She's our Vice Chair of our Committee this year, and she'll be sharing a little bit, but I'm going to give you a brief overview, and then she'll talk to you as well, okay? So, thank you again for giving us this opportunity annually to present what we've done this year, and to share that with you, and get your questions and feedback. We always really appreciate this opportunity. Sorry. Oh, here it is, sorry, yes, thank you. Okay. So, this next slide is a graphic representation that depicts the comprehensive services of our pre-K and early Head Start programs, and it also highlights some of the happenings of this year. It's reflective of the importance of attending to the whole child in the context of school and home, and when all of these different elements work well together, the child is ready, and we believe that they're at their optimal developmental potential, and they're ready for school. And we really appreciate that you voted on one Fairfax that really works towards creating those opportunities for kids. Next, Frances, thanks. So, this year you can see that we processed over 5,000 applications, and that's really what it takes to get our enrollment of about a little close, a little below 2,000 children to be enrolled in our program. And oftentimes, the children who, in those applications, who were not accepted, were not eligible because they were over income, or they were too young or too old, and in some cases, families were unable to finish the process for some reason, so they started the application process, but they didn't quite complete the process. This year, our funded enrollment was 1,853 children. This was up from last year, because you may recall, one of your things that you wanted us to do was increase our class size, and we did do that to 18, so we're at the highest level we can have in a classroom right now. So, we do have 1,853 children enrolled. And next year, we will increase that by 10 students, and that's because our VPI-plus classrooms were at 17, that was a different grant, and now that grant is going away, and they will be captured under the VPI grant, so we will increase the children in those classrooms as well. And some of our classrooms moved to larger classrooms that can have the capacity for the additional child, so we were able to raise the enrollment by 10 children for next year. As of May, we had 106 students on our waitlist, and that is birth to four years old, and we also supported 125 children in the child find process. This next slide will be, is very familiar to you from the Goal One report. You can see that we have opportunities for kids throughout the county, but that we still see a need in certain communities in the county, specifically the Mount Vernon, Lee, and Herndon, and Justice Community, and Dale as well. So, we still see this consistent need, which you are well aware of based on Goal One. We have had many accomplishments to celebrate this year, but we did want to highlight this one accomplishment from the Bellwether Education, that our program was found, is recognized as a national exemplar program, which is, you know, we really need to step back and celebrate the good work we're doing, and the recognition that we received on a national level around how we are targeting kids using our data, our alignment of our curriculum, which we worked very hard to do that years ago, so that we have the ability for kindergarten teachers and pre-K teachers to talk to each other in a different way because of that curriculum alignment and the assessment alignment. We also have seen, and you know this from the study that was done a few years ago by ORC, that we see great outcomes for our children that are in our program, that they are succeeding at higher rates than comparable groups that didn't have our experience. And then also, one of the highlights was that we have pay parity to K-12, which doesn't always exist in the pre-K realm. So, as you know, part of our grant is that, and best practice, is to provide some opportunities for families to be engaged in their child's education, and one of those opportunities is to participate in our Parent Policy Committee, or Your Advisory Committee, and you can see that we have volunteer representatives, two from each of our sites or centers. We also have an Executive Board, and 16 other representatives that come out of that larger pool, and then six of those, those parents are also represented on the County Policy Council. So, we have the Policy, the Parent Policy Committee within FCPS, and then we also have representation on the countywide Policy Council. And some of the opportunities the Policy Council representatives have is that they do come to monthly meetings where information is shared about our program, and they also have some decision-making in how we move forward in our work as a program. They also go back to the larger communities within their school and share information, and facilitate in conjunction with our Family Service Specialist meetings with other parents, and they also do have a, build a relationship with those parent service partners. So, here is our board. You can see we have many representatives that are committed to doing this work every month with us, and now I'm going to turn it over to Rehab Albana to share her work with us and her experience this year.
So, hello, everyone. Good evening, School Board members. It's my great honor to speak to you tonight on behalf of the FCPS pre-K and early Head Start Parents. My name is Rehab Albana. I'm a current Vice Chairperson of the Parent Policy Committee of Fairfax County Public Schools. Okay, to start off, I would like to express my gratitude towards all the continuous support and the comprehensive services and pre-K. The pre-K and early Head Start program provides, my family has truly benefited from participating in this program. My daughter, Lara, she's five now, participated in the pre-K program at London Town Elementary School. The very important point I want to talk about is her transition from home all day with mom to school, long day, eight to three. She became more, actually, she gained many good things. She became more independent, and the teachers were so patient in helping her dealing with that, and now, and to get over the feeling of separation from mom at home quickly, she accepted the idea of attending school, and now she, if she stayed home over the weekend or something, she said, "That's boring. She want to go to school." She really asked about when we'll go back to school. I want to share a little bit about my story as an example of parents' journey into the pre-K, early Head Start program. I'm from Egypt, actually moved to Virginia six years ago. My son was enrolled in fourth grade in London Town Elementary School, and it was through, I knew you about the program through a flyer. I found it in my son Tuesday folder, and then I heard about the program. I never thought that would be as a turning point in my daughter's life. My daughter's first experience was during the pre-K orientation at the school, and in a blank overnight, she became attached. I learned of volunteering opportunities in the classroom also, as a London Town School representative in a school committee, because of how easy it was engaged with my Family Service Specialist, I jumped at being a part of the Parent Policy Committee. That's the honor of me. In September, I attended the Parent Policy Committee kickoff meeting at Robinson Secondary School. I met the most extraordinary staff, who supported and cheered me on the nominate myself as a secretary for the committee, and on this part, I was elected. Later, I became the Policy Committee Vice Chair. This experience was like opening a door for me to an enormous emotional, educational world. I could see that by becoming involved, I could positively enhance my daughter's future, along with the many other kids. I attended a monthly parent meetings at the school Parent Policy Committee at Lee Center, and volunteered in the classroom. By doing all of that, I was sure I started to set a good foundation, putting down the first solid brick in my daughter's future. Actually, this pre-K year hasn't only been an amazing experience for my child, but also for me. I've been able to enrich my skills by participating, on receiving rich experience and trainings. First of all, the Parent Center meetings, a parent meeting was held monthly at the school, which was always very useful to meet the teachers, know the curriculum plan, share vital subject with Mia, the specialist, and the parents, such as talking about touching and many vital subjects that, if it's by myself, I wouldn't know how to talk about it with my kid. And also, the Parent Policy Committee, a meeting was held monthly that opened the window to me and the parents, too, who have participated to a wider vision, to the huge effort that happened to offer the daily school life to our kids. And also, the Policy Council, the meeting that significantly covered all the county services, which clarifying definition of federal, early Head Start and Head Start budget, fiscal report, treasure report, and administrative update. And the very important point I want to talk about is trainings. As I got many trainings and self-assessment were offered to the board members to open their minds to understanding and managing Head Start program, know the power of care, the courage to take decisions. As a self-experience, I was trained on parliamentary, secretary, vice chairman person procedures to participate positively in meetings. I have helped to develop new ideas to engage more parents to be involved and become leaders. So, I was so excited to have had the opportunity to be engaged in such a program by volunteering in the class, as I volunteer four hours per week regularly since October till now, and in addition to have been able to get to know my daughter's wonderful teachers, Mrs. Rife and Mrs. Sillis, I can see the happiness in my daughter's eye when she proudly, in the middle of all the classroom, she say, "Miss Ruby, my mom." She called me a teacher, too. So, she's my mom. During the lunchtime, the children learn many skills, such as following interactions to wash hands in order, first in order, and sit with friends, encouraging each other to finish their healthy meal and try new foods, and now my daughter loves to eat broccoli. That's very good. Actually, between what I hear from other, the complaints of other moms, that they have to hide the vegetables inside something, no, she asks about it by name, and that's very good. That has helped daughter to develop health feeding habits as her choices have changed. As we know, happiness is a product of helping others, therefore, I would like to see the School Board continue to fund this wonderful program, the pre-K program, not only impresses and educates the student, but also supports the entire family. Thank you. Okay. Actually, one more thing I want to talk about, we have three recommendations, and we hope they will get approved. Number one, dedicate funding for planning time substitutes to ensure planning of collaborative time in classrooms. Number two, dedicating funding for an additional mental health specialist position to meet the increasing needs for trauma-informed care. Number three, dedicate funding fund to install or upgrade preschool playgrounds. As 378 pre-K children in 21 classrooms across 17 schools don't have access to age-appropriate playground equipment, and regarding the playground, actually, my daughter in London Town, they have playground but one slide, and that's it, and they take turns. And when they get bored of that in their fun time, they start to play acting as a family. They create their own stories and act, so we hope this recommendation will get accepted, and thank you for your, you give me your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Albana. We appreciate your insights. I do have a couple of board members who have some questions, starting with Ms. McLaughlin.
Very much excited to see how much we have brought down the waitlist for our pre-K and early childhood education. One thing I was hoping maybe we could consider adding to the report is a chart that actually shows what has been the reduction over time, perhaps maybe in the last eight years of where we were in terms of number of students on the waitlist in Fairfax County for pre-K to where we are now.
So, what we could probably do is the, the number of slots we've increased. The waitlist is a very fluid, you know, there's lots of variables that contribute to the waitlist, and it's important to remember that being on the waitlist does not mean you're not in a high-quality program. And at different times of year, the waitlist gets quite high, and then it reduces. So, in Goal One, the waitlist was much higher, you heard the number, that was much higher, and this number of 106 doesn't include Fairfax County's waitlist, it only includes FCPS waitlist, because that's what we're reporting on today, it's just the FCPS program. So, we potentially may be able to go back and say, every February, this was what the waitlist was for Fairfax County Public Schools, but we, it would be important to not take that data just at face value. We would have to give you all the variables that contribute to a waitlist. So, it might be a better way to look at it is the number of slots that we've increased over the last several years, but, but you can decide how you want us to share that data.
I appreciate that, and certainly, as my colleagues all have an opportunity to speak, maybe people can talk about how we might help just enhance the information, and the reason I say that is because with the School Board and the Board Supervisors, having taken such an intentionality through the successful Children Youth Policy Team, and early childhood being such a focal point when it began over six years ago, from a one Fairfax lens, the waitlist is the waitlist. So, if we want to have a differentiation between what is the Fairfax County Public Schools waitlist, and why that looks different from the county, but it is a topic that we're certainly hearing from our public advocates about where are we as a county, and it's a highly visible issue, and so I think how much we can have specific information, both for both boards and for the public, would be really helpful. So, the fact that we've got two different numbers would be also very important for us to be able to speak to that with some accuracy. So, certainly recommend, you know, want to support whatever you recommend and how we do that, but I, I think we're going to need to at least then have a little asterisk that says, "These are the numbers for Fairfax County," or maybe it's a chart that's Fairfax County Schools, and then this is countywide what the waitlist is, because otherwise, I don't want some people saying, "Well, how come Fairfax County Schools numbers look dramatically different, and what are they, you know, trying to gloss over?" I just, you know, the more we can have that clarity, that would be great. I think you referenced also about the UVA grant, or you were talking about the grant funding, but the work we've been doing with UVA for studying our programming, and so, I don't know if you could provide an update for the board. I've heard several colleagues say, "We so loved that opportunity when UVA came to visit and presented with you, and let us know how things were going." So, I know this isn't necessarily part of the report, but just tying that in a little bit, I think you have in the PowerPoint how we're being recognized for a best-in-class, and I want to applaud you and your team, again, for, for your work and efforts of having us as a school division partner with UVA. That's kind of the best of all worlds.
So, we currently have data about children that were in the pre, our pre-K program, and in the county pre-K program, and how they did in kindergarten. I don't have that data in front of me, but I'm happy to share that report with you, and then next year, the cohort will be entering second grade, but we don't have the data on their first grade experience. But I did just meet with Dr. Pianta about three weeks ago, and he was, he is more than willing to come and share that information with you in person, if you want more than just a written report.
Thank you. I would suggest to my colleagues that depending on, you know, what schedule is available, if, you know, Dr. Pietta?
Pianta.
Pianta is coming up here, I mean, I wouldn't want him just to have to come from Charlottesville only to present to our board, but if he were coming up into the area, I'd love to see, and working with our chair, how we might be able to coordinate his ability to also come before the board, because that was a really meaningful dialogue when he was here. And I appreciate you also spotlighting the pay parity for instructors, again, another thing to celebrate, and appreciate that you included that in there. And then to, yeah, and to Rehab, thank you so much for taking time away from your family to come share your experience and your work with this. One of the things we know from research is that parents who are engaged in their children's education are known to have great success in their educational services, so your connection and being involved in this way is not only appreciated by us, but I know it's going to be something that continues to strengthen and serve your children and modeling for them as well, the investment that parents bring to their education.
Yeah, thank you so much for first giving me my daughter this opportunity to get involved in the program, because, to be honest, before that, we were looking for a daycare or something like that, it's madly expensive, and unfortunately, I didn't know they have early Head Start that I could, yeah, join my kid for, but that's okay. This year is really a big transition in the whole family life, so thank you so much for supporting such a program. Thank you.
Ms. Keys, Gamar.
Thank you for being here. I just want to get a few more clarifications, and Ms. McLaughlin started on it. I don't think, and this may seem quite obvious, what is the distinction between FCPS? Where is their pool? Why is their, their number so different than, than FCPS?
So, we receive funding from multiple grants, and all the money comes through the county. The county runs two head, well, actually, they oversee, they're the grantee for all the grants, except for VPI-plus, which comes through the schools, but this will be the last year for that. So, then the county has a Head Start program called Greater Mount Vernon, which has early Head Start and Head Start, and then there's a nonprofit, Higher Horizons in the Baileys Falls Church area, that is also a delegate agency for that federal Head Start or early Head Start money. Then we have VPI money that also comes through the county. The county works with community programs and has slots within community programs where children are receiving VPI funds, and the power of that model is that when they partner with a program, there becomes expectations to elevate the quality of those community programs. So, that partnership in the community is, it really focuses on improving quality, which is, is a wonderful way to get kids to have better experiences. And then we're the other agency that actually provides the most opportunities for kids in terms of numbers from birth to five. So, all the money comes through the county, and we also receive additional money from you, the School Board, as well as the Board of Supervisors, to run these programs.
Because, obviously, it does, and I think, you know, as Ms. McLaughlin was saying, there's, I believe, confusion in the community, because you see these thousands of numbers of waiting list kids, and, and this is quite different, and so perhaps...
And it is important to remember that this is a May waitlist, which kids, we have already geared up for next year, kids have aged out, they wouldn't be eligible anymore, so only kids who would be eligible for the program would, we would report on this waitlist. So, that's why I'm saying it's really important that, as Ms. McLaughlin suggested, that we have some asterisks and really help people understand what the waitlist is, because it's not this 700 kids, and 700 kids stay on it throughout the year.
Thank you. I think that would be very helpful. The other thing I'd like to talk about is your recommendations. I think one of them had to do with trauma-informed. Were you trying to get training, or exactly how would that work?
So, currently, we have mental health specialists that do not provide direct service, mental health services to children, but what they do is they go and they work with teachers to have a better understanding of, of children. We all know children exist in context, we have to understand not only them in their school context, but their home context, their neighborhood context, and all of that has having an influence on children. And what we have noticed is that we are seeing an uptick in kids who have experienced some sort of trauma, or their families have experienced trauma, and their parents, and what we know now is that trauma, those things can be transferred to kids through their DNA, which is surprising, right? So, even if the child didn't directly experience trauma, there's some, there's some chemistry in them that gives them some behaviors that might be connected to trauma. So, what we're seeing is this greater uptick with kids, and it's manifesting itself in behavior in our classrooms, that can be quite extreme and aggressive. So, what we don't want to do is turn kids away, because we want to help them get whatever they need, their access to those resources early, so that we send them on the right trajectory once they're in kindergarten. And we have the ability that, and the resources at this, at this stage, through the grant expectations, to be able to do that and put some intensity around that, whether it's the family partner or the mental health specialist. So, the mental health specialist goes in and they work with the teachers to, to support them in allow, and how to respond to kids, how to create relationships with kids that have experienced trauma, and really deepen those relationships, because we all know that regardless of whether you're four years old or 18 years old, those relationships make a huge difference in kids' lives, and really can impact them in a different way. So, what, as I said, we are seeing an uptick in the number of kids who have experienced personally trauma, whose families have experienced trauma, and what we want to be able to do is be really responsive in a very timely manner, and support our teachers and our families as much as possible, so again, we can get them the help they need, so that kids are on the right trajectory when it comes to school.
So, you're talking about the mental health specialists that can help to train staff members, but not necessarily direct support for families?
They, they, they might support them and strategies they could use, but we're not doing therapy, is my point. So, we, we are not, even though several of our mental health specialists have that skillset and that license, but that is not their role or their job to provide direct therapy to the family, so what we do is how do you respond to your child when these things are happening, but then we refer out to, for them to get family therapy.
Okay, and are you utilizing the ACE evaluation at all?
So, we do not, because we, we had long discussions about that, because we have to be able to respond appropriately once we have that data, and we, the behavioral health through skip, I know there's a early childhood part of that, but that has not, that strategic plan has not been fleshed out, so what, we did not want to give this to families and then not being able to respond to it appropriately. Ideally, we'd love to get to where we could use the, are all of you familiar with that? So, it's... use the...are all of you familiar with that? So, it's Adversarial Childhood Experience. It's a questionnaire. It has 10 questions. And depending on how you score on that, the higher scores, there's direct correlation to mental health, physical health, wellness as you age. So, a certain number is directly correlated to heart disease, cancers. It's incredible research. If you ever really want to get nerdy and read it, it's very powerful data that if used...we don't feel equipped right now to be responsive enough to use it. That's my short answer. But we're hoping to get there in our partnership with the community, I mean, the county and the behavioral health people at the county.
Thank you.
Actually, regarding the specialist position, I just have an own experience because talking about the trauma, that's...I think it has levels. Because in my daughter's class, there is a boy called Michael, and he's...
No names.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I just...sorry, I just mentioned the name for a reason because when they start to teach them M starts with something. So, the teacher said the name. My daughter and other kids, I was there, they refused to learn M for...sorry, that's why I said the Mike, M for the name, because for some reason, he is...my daughter said he's weird. Away with the expressions. I taught her not to say that expression, but he doesn't talk to anyone. He is a bit strange, like taking a long time to understand or to speak. He always drawing some stuff like that. So, I don't know if that called trauma, but that affect the boy. He always isolated. No one wants to play with him. No one wants to say M for his name. They chose Mea, another name. So, I think that boy...and I met his mother in the parent meeting in the school. She's a single mom. She's always busy, and she...I felt she needs help. But of course, no time to talk about details with her. So, is that a level that needs someone especially to visit the class and see this picture and said which level of a trauma he is or what his problem for being a better child in the future, if he being isolated all the time, that affect him and, of course, the rest of the kids. Thank you.
Mr. Moon.
Just a couple of questions regarding the number of applications and number of students we can accommodate. Out of 5,117, we are accommodating about 1,850, and we have about 106 currently on the waitlist as of May. For the remaining more than 3,000 applications, I see the reasons why they were...I mean, are we...basically, if they are income and age eligible, it's either we put...we have them enrolled or I put them on the waitlist. Do I...is that my assumption, fair assumption?
Yes, but we also do collaborate with the county. So, we also check to see if they wanted to come to the public schools, but there was room in the county in their community, we definitely refer to the county. So, if they have room...
So, some of those applicants we're not able to accommodate, enrolled, maybe on the county side?
Exactly.
Do you have any estimate of the extent of that?
I can see if we can get that data.
Okay.
I couldn't speak to it off the top of my head.
Okay. And another thing I am trying to ascertain is, you know, students who are not eligible due to the income requirement, family income requirement, you know, what percentage of them go to, you know, a private, a pre-K or on other early education, early childhood education services. Just wanted to see what the needs in the community is like.
So, that's a really good question. We don't have the capacity to follow up with families when we don't find them eligible. We do refer them to like HIPAA or early-lit or to try to support them because those aren't connected to the income piece. So, but I couldn't...we don't have the capacity to actually follow up with all the families who are over income to see if their child becomes enrolled sometimes.
Because what I'm interested in is knowing, you know, being able to figure out, you know, there could be a sort of like area where you're not too poor to be eligible and you're not too wealthy to be able to send to a private, early childhood education, you know, placements. That's where a community needs maybe...
So, we could think about that. You bring up a really good point, Mr. Moon, that we often see these families who are right on the cusp of being eligible, but as Mrs. Albana referred, childcare is so expensive. So, those families, what happens to those children? So, maybe our team could go back and think about how we might, with the county...
With the county.
Look at that data, I mean, gather that data. I'm not sure it's possible, but I will definitely...we will definitely put our very smart staff brains together and see what maybe we could get for you.
Because, you know, the map that we have with where, you know, by color coded codes, where we can see the percentage of young children who come to us without, you know, pre-K experience, you know, many of them could be, you know, from those families.
So, one thing we probably could do for you, that would be fairly easy, is using that map and saying of those children who didn't have a pre-K experience, who now qualifies for free and reduced meals? Because those would be the children who would qualify for our program. So, we could look at their kindergarten status on free and reduced meals and let you know of the percentages of kids who are reporting not having a pre-K experience in kindergarten, what percentage would have qualified for our program?
I think it goes beyond that, even amongst the children who might not have qualified. Because I'm trying to see what more we can do to expand the eligibility to accommodate the families and children who are otherwise not able to send to private childcare or other early childhood experience, education experience places. That's where my interest lies.
I can see if we can...I'm not sure we can...I'm not making a promise, but we will put our brains together.
Thank you. You know, I'm not asking you as an extra step because we don't do extra step from the community reports.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Hines.
Thank you. And thank you so much for another great report. It's always inspiring to hear, especially from the parent representative and a parent leader. Thank you for being here. So, just a couple of things. I also am interested in that UVA study. And, you know, we have so much that comes at us. I blank out that we even have that going on, and it's wonderful that we do. Dr. Braybrand, do you know, if we get reports out from that study, the UVA study, do you send them to us in the Braybrand briefing or something?
You know, I don't know that there's been and Mark and checked me that we've had an update since Dean Pianta came in the fall. I do like the idea that Ms. McLaughlin said. I think we could work with the chair leadership and try to...he does come up here a lot for stuff so that we could weave in a chance for you all to get another update annually. And if he can't, we'll certainly supply it in the Braybrand briefing.
Okay, thank you. Because I just think that's so helpful, not only to follow our own kids for the sake of doing that, but also, you know, this whole question of whether we are able to serve every family that has need, you know, that is in that pretty wide gap between, you know, not eligible for Head Start, but can possibly afford childcare in this area, you know. We need, as a policy matter, to be talking about universal pre-K in this community and in this Commonwealth. And I think that kind of research can help the whole conversation. So, I think we should keep that up on the radar since we're doing it here. I had just one...well, two other questions. One, thank you for the recommendations. I feel like I've heard at least one of them before. So, what I'd like to do is ask if anybody knows whether we have yet asked these as budget questions. Do we have budget numbers for these three requests for dedicated funding? Do we know? If not, I'll ask it as a budget question, maybe.
Yeah. Or you could send me an email, and I can have Lee Burden cross-check our existing budget questions. And if not, we could just add it in.
Okay, good.
Be glad to take care of it that way.
I would like to do that. You know, it's discouraging to hear the same recommendations come back again and realize that we haven't done anything about it. You know, our advisory committees work hard, and they come to us with good ideas that are field-tested, you know, and put together by the people out there who know what they're talking about. So, I will ask this as a budget question, and I would like if we could probably try to work it into the superintendent's proposed budget for next year if we can.
Okay.
It's my thought, anyway. And then, just finally, Ms. Albana, thank you again for coming. I have one question for you. In the community where you live, do you have a sense of the other families and the other parents and how well they are able to prepare their children for kindergarten? Do you...I just wonder, do you talk about Head Start with your neighbors and other families?
Actually, yeah, it happens because although most of the children in my area are old enough for this program, but the thing is, they start to see me going out with her, with her backpack every morning, not just like...and actually, London Town is just walking distance from my house, so walking with her to school, not just drop her off at daycare or something. So, yeah, they start to ask, and I like happily explained everything of this program, and they start to talk to her. And I remember the first time, I mean, they saw that effect on her directly. The first time she started to sing ABC, she was badly like, very, very quiet. Now, she's so loud and so confident that we tell her, "Stop!" Like, "Lower your voice." So, they know like how she get improved. And they...I have one family, actually, they are in, I think Alexandria, and she asked about that because she was thinking about getting her kid in a school next year, and I gave her all the information. So, that's...I know just one friend, but that's what I have. But in general, maybe my neighbors will talk to their relatives, maybe one thing happened that other families somewhere will apply for this. But, yeah, I encourage everyone to do this because that's cool. I think even daycare, it's just nine to one if someone can afford that. And but eight to three, that was a huge transition in my kid's daily routine. So, it's very, very good. And by the way, my friend, her boy is just younger than my kid for a year, and definitely he doesn't eat. When he saw my daughter eat, like just her meal, and because when they finished their meal first in the class, they call queen of lunch or queen of breakfast. So, she said, "I'm the queen," and he was surprised. And I explained to him why that happened. So, my friend, yeah, asked about that, but I'm not sure if in Alexandria there is a school or not, but I give her all information. So, I was lucky. I found a flyer in my kid folder, and I've been approved. And I want to add one thing about HIPAA because first time I applied for the program, actually, my daughter was three. They said no. I don't know why, although we still have their same circumstances. But maybe they preferred four, like very close to kindergarten. So, yeah, they referred me to HIPAA and Arabic literacy. I was driving from Sinterbyl to Alexandria twice a week for two hours. But there, the first, she learned how to hold a pen. Like, clearly, my kid went to school, know how to write her name, Lara Chatila. And to HIPAA, she still come to me. That's my second year with her. That's a very, very, very good program because she give me the package. I think most of the parents want to learn their children something, but they don't know, is that appropriate for their age or not? What shall I give her? Is that...what shall I do if they say, "I don't want now" or something? How can I get her excited? The instructor of HIPAA, she give me all these steps, how to deal with your kid. Now, she knows how to count one to 100, and that's a very, very, very good program. Thank you.
Ms. Hines, are you done? Okay. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you very much for this report. I apologize for being late. I think everybody on 66 decided to crash heading eastbound today. But thankfully, my colleagues have asked a great number of questions that filled in some gaps. But I wanted to ask a question. It picks up a little bit on Mr. Moon's interest in that those parents and families who are sort of at the edge of financial eligibility. And I guess the question is, do we...is every student in the pre-K program five days a week? Or are they...some of them go three days and some of them two days. I'm thinking that maybe there's a way there to pull in that remaining...those remaining families that we could help if we sort of gave partial weeks to allow students participate.
The grant, I think that's a really interesting idea of trying to problem solve and giving kids opportunities. The current structures of the grant wouldn't allow for that, but, you know, independent funding from the school board or the Board of Supervisors, we could obviously look at more creative ways of serving additional children that aren't under a grant that has specific guidelines and regulations.
And I was a little...I mean, I was happy to see that there were just 106 students on the waitlist. I seem to recall that the number was...has been much greater in the past. So, I think that's wonderful that that number is so much lower. But I also think that this...this early, you know, experience for the children to have high-quality preschool experience, particularly for those families that maybe have had disrupted, you know, by moves and other events and difficulty with language and low income, those families in particular, we need to try to help as many as possible. So, maybe there's a way in the future. But really terrific report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I actually have a couple of questions. First, it would be helpful if we could, and I'm echoing what Mr. Moon had asked about the location of the students that are on the waitlist and where the greatest demand is. And so, we have this wonderful heat map that shows where students are coming to school without pre-K. And you have offered to go ahead and let us know of those students, how many of them are...will receive free and reduced meals when they enter kindergarten. But it would be helpful to see with the 106 on the waitlist today where the overlap is between those students and the heat map.
So, you may recall you asked for similar next steps in Goal One. So, we have put that information together. That's based on, which is the information I know you would want. It's the county-wide waitlist. So, we have put that together, and you'll be receiving that information based on the waitlist that was reported in Goal One and the next steps answers that will be coming from that, from those questions.
When can we expect that?
We're looking...we're still gathering a lot of the answers to all the questions. I mean, that part is ready. I can get it to Dr. Braybrand if that's something that you want prior to all the next steps coming.
Yeah. If you want, you can send it to me, and we can put it in the Braybrand briefing or link to it in the Braybrand briefing.
That would be great. Thank you. Additionally, I wanted to explore two things with you. One is on page 14 of the report, under speech-language pathologist data. I see that there are only 79 students that were screened for speech and language concerns out of the...is that out of the total 1,863?
Yes. Yeah. Those were children that bubbled up as actually having a... Those were children that bubbled up as actually having a speech concern. So there's more in-depth screening.
It seems a little low, especially given the percentage of students that have demand for speech-language pathology services once they get to kindergarten and above. Is there something we should be doing to be more intentful in trying to address their concerns?
So I think it's important to remember that our students also are speaking, typically, you can see from there the numbers of children that are coming from families who speak other languages. So we're always a little cautious of over-identifying kids early when they're speaking two languages. But we do, if there are, we do do a dual-language assessment on children we're particularly concerned about. That could lead to speech therapy later. I can follow through with our speech people and double-check on that. We do really try to be cautious in over-identification while also being advocates for kids who potentially have speech issues.
I would appreciate a deeper look at it from the standpoint of, there are some concerns that we are under-identifying students that have communications needs. And I know that there have been some discussions about the number of speech pathologists that are actually available in our schools. And so taking a deeper dive there would be very helpful. Additionally, would love to understand a little bit more on the transitions. So transitions from Childfind into our pre-K and from pre-K into elementary school and how we not only provide supports for transitions of the students and their families, but any sort of special services that they're receiving. They may not have a full IEP yet, but may be demonstrating behaviors that may require more intentful supports.
So we address transitions throughout the year. We really think it's important for us to be thinking about transitions, not only to kindergarten, but just transitions in life. And we know that the more prepared we are, even as adults for transitions, the better equipped we are to be successful in the next place we land. So for our young children, we do a variety of, we give a variety of opportunities for those transitions, from simple visiting kindergarten classrooms, getting to know kindergarten teachers at their school, to providing written information that go to the school and the kindergarten teacher, whether it's the base school they are already attending or a school that they might attend that is different from their pre-K school, that provides an outline of children and how they, you can support them in being successful. We also provide teachers and kindergarten teachers opportunity to go and observe children towards the spring. So our pre-K teachers can go into kindergarten classrooms and we get, provide a sub so that they're talking with kindergarten teachers about students. We also give an opportunity for kindergarten teachers to not only go to our pre-K program, but also out into the community and visit programs where they have children that are transitioning into their kindergarten programs. We also recently, we also have the Neighborhood School readiness teams that you might be familiar with, that are in 13 communities throughout the county. That really, that is one of their big focus, school readiness and also that transition into kindergarten. So depending on the different areas in the neighborhoods that are addressing these issues, there's a variety of ways that they might address those transitions. They might have weekend events for families to learn more about a school. They might have evening events. They might, we have a group that is looking and doing some interviews with kindergarten teachers to see how effective that transition form that is filled out. Is it a good use of the time of filling it out? Is it really providing the data that will be, inform kindergarten teachers and administrators on where, what classroom to place that child in or how to work with that child when they arrive at their school? So really, there's quite a continuum of opportunities, from a simple visiting of a classroom to transition opportunities to opportunities that happen throughout the summer to allow children to become familiar with their kindergarten experience, school, excuse me.
That's fantastic. I guess my concern is that we have a full continuum or a full slate of options. How do we ensure that there is a systematic approach to those transitions and that that approach is followed with our own classrooms as well as the county classrooms or the community-provided classrooms to ensure that our students have as smooth a transition as possible? Do we have a specific rubric that we ensure it's followed?
So I think I need a little clarification. So are you asking, are there sort of tight things that every program does and there's looser things? So, so I can speak from the public schools, there are tight things. So every one of our centers, our family service partner does a meeting with their parents about transitions. So they talk to parents about transitions. They make connections between what's happening in pre-K and kindergarten. They help facilitate their attendance at the kindergarten orientation, which all schools have. So that's a very tight piece, as well as those transition forms and the opportunity to go and observe classrooms. Now, how schools do the other pieces has been left up to them. We do offer guidance about the loose part, like, offering opportunities in the spring, I mean, in the summer and spring to invite your incoming kindergarteners in. The county is also beginning to use our transition form as well. So we're not quite there that that's tight for all county kids, but it is an optional piece and we highly encourage it for their children in the grant as well as children, programs that are a part of the Neighborhood School readiness partnerships as well. So that's a little looser.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Mr. Wilson.
And you'll have the last word.
Okay, thanks. And this is just a, just a, just a follow-up. So for kids that are identified through Childfind and are receiving special education services, when they age out of that, that program, they, they don't necessarily end up in pre-K even if they want to because they may not meet the eligibility requirements, is that?
So the, if you think about the pre, the preschool special ed program, similar to you, you would look at special education K to 12. So children in that preschool special education can be in a more restrictive environment that they're not, they don't come to a program like ours. But there's also children who are eligible and also have an IEP that sit in our classrooms. So they can be in both programs and they're the same age. So we, three-year-olds, they could be in a preschool special ed classroom in the afternoon and come to our program in the morning. They could sit in our program all day and a preschool special ed teacher could push in and provide services within the context of our classroom. So it really is the, the scope that you would see K to 12 in terms of receiving special education services.
But if a child was identified through Childfind, hits age three, ages out of the program, would they be categorically eligible if they continued to need speech services, let's say, for something like that? Would they, would they be categorically eligible for the pre-K program?
So they would still, the first piece we look at is income. So they might, so you wouldn't age out of the preschool special ed program. You might no longer need those services and your IEP is, you know, because of testing, so you would be...
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, when infant toddler, the county's program, they hand off kids to our system, right? So they're aging out of infant toddler at age three, they can't keep going.
Right, now I understand what you're saying, okay. So can, would they be categorically eligible? So we have a point system. So first, families are found eligible with their income, but then we give points based on needs. And one of the reasons you might get points is you have a child with special needs. So you might, but you still have to be income-eligible, but your income can be a little higher than other families if you have a child with special needs.
So do you, do you know the number of, of children who at age three, they age out of
Infant toddler?
Infant toddler, continue to have special needs, needing an IEP? Do you know what that number is? Because I think maybe Ms. Corbett-Sanders was reacting in the same way I am to the number of, of children with disabilities in the program. So do you have any idea what that number is?
No, I'd have to talk to Denise Forrest, who's the coordinator of that program, to find out the number who give kids who transition from infant toddler into preschool special education.
Right, versus the number who, total number, I guess. That would be the, the second piece of that. Right, because some of them don't transition. The majority of them probably don't because of income or other limitations.
Yes, so we can get you that information. We, of the number of kids who come out infant toddler and how many of them qualify in our, coming to our program. Is that what you're, I'm not quite sure I'm getting what you're asking me.
Yeah, I think that's what you're asking. And I guess the reason why I'm pressing a little bit on it and it's definitely not intended to be harassing. But the, the benefit of having those qualified educators continue with those kids as opposed to just putting your disabled child into a for-profit daycare center, it could be pretty dramatic. And so that, that, I think it'd be interesting to understand what that figure is because those children, if they have to be put into a regular daycare setting, you know, could be benefited a great deal by being with, with Vraveck County professionals.
Sure, I can look and see the number of children who enter our program with IEPs already versus the kids who are found eligible after and they've trans, so we're going to have a smaller, I'm just going to want to clarify, we'll have a smaller number of kids because we don't have it, we don't have enough slots for three-year-olds. So when they come out of infant toddler, they might not come right into our program because our funding for three-year-olds is not very great. So they might have a gap before they come to us as four-year-olds with an IEP.
That's exactly, I think, that what I'm getting at.
That's exactly what Mr. Wilson wants to see so that the board can decide whether they want to direct resources to fund that gap. That we're meeting their needs earlier, they get older, and then, oops, it shrinks. It's okay, it's, it's...
Yes, please.
Okay. Actually, I have a suggestion, just came up to my mind now. If it works, I'm not sure. But when I was attending HIPPI program, it was in London Town, actually, the SAC rooms, it's just an empty room and I think storage room, like the school stack something on the side. And it has a bathroom inside the room. So, and we were sitting on a side table with HIPPI instructor. So can we use these rooms for the program? For the kid to reduce the waiting list kids?
Oh, we talk about the SAC rooms quite a bit. Thank you, it's a good idea. Very good question.
Thank you, thank you.
Ladies, thank you so much. It's an excellent report.
Thank you so much for your time.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, we do have to take a brief moment to go into closed session. And so I will read the motion. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel regarding a petition to enter upon school property pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 37, 11A7 and A8. Motion made by Mr. Moon, seconded by Ms. Hines. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. We'll go into closed session.